I'd like to call to order the April 29th, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer, here. Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowan? Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich? Mr. Whiten?
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10, 4, 12, and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports and discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10, 4, 13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess to executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Fledgling Regents?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Okay. Linda, any other communications other than what's on the agenda?
There was one that came through over the break, but I'm going to report on it at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Number eight, we have, oh, these are new corrections to the minutes. From the March 25th, 2019, meeting, we have a slight change. What exactly is a change? Is it just being, oh, I see, from five nights to six nights? I see. All righty. And then number nine is the approval of minutes from the public workshop and executive session meetings, March 18th, 2019, and then the regular public and executive session meetings from March 25th, 2019. Can I get a motion to move those corrections to the minutes, number eight and nine?
So moved.
I'm sorry, the correction and the approval of minutes. Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope. All right, seeing none, Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to the student representative report. We have a student this evening. Good evening, Avery.
Good evening. So, not much news from the schools as last week students were on spring break. But for Bartle, today Bartle had an NJSLA, third through fifth, for ELA and math. Tomorrow Bartle is hosting an Assembly Awards ceremony as well as a student council meeting. Finally, on Thursday, there's a Poetry Cafe presentation. For the middle school, the sixth grade class is going on a class trip to the aquarium tomorrow. Also, on Tuesday, the Highland Park Middle School girls softball team has a home game against Edison. We wish them the best of luck. For the high school, Ms. Puccio, the high school librarian, would like to extend her gratitude to the Highland Park class of 1969. Their generous donation of a new display cabinet and a newspaper stand is very much appreciated. Additionally, the high school DECA team is gone at a conference. We wish them the best of luck. Coincidentally, the Zaiu is also on the DECA team, so he's gone.
All right. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Avery? So did you actually get to relax over spring break? No work to do?
Oh, prepping for APs.
All right. But no assigned work?
No.
Excellent. That's what we like to hear. Okay, so we will move on to Scott's report.
I just, I have one quick item I'd like to bring up, and that's not on the agenda, relates to the websites. By now, the community and the board probably noticed that we rolled out redesigned websites that were changed as a result of lots of feedback I received personally and via social media about the lack of user-friendly interaction people were having with the sites. It appears the sites when they were first developed were really not made with the parent guardian in mind, so we redesigned the sites to make it much easier to get to things like the school directory, the calendars. It should only take one, maybe two clicks to get to some of the most important items. However, I would love the board, some have already done this, and the community to get back to me by email if they have any suggestions for additional ways we can improve the experience, the interaction experience. So don't hesitate to email me. I have a pretty stiff back. I can handle criticism. Really, the intent is to learn how we can continue to do better, so don't hesitate to reach out.
So I have a question. How did you do this? Like, I remember the last time that there was a website redesign, it was made to seem like it was the most Herculean effort, tens of thousands of dollars, but you just, like, sneezed one out. I mean, I'm sure it was a lot more difficult, but like...
So, yeah, so we used a template. I had a lot of input from stakeholders, so we actually organized some committees to help us with this. Parents run those committees. It just took a lot of months over time, little by little, and here it is. It's all collective effort, really, just all came together. But it's not a Herculean task.
Oh, well, that's really, I mean, I'm happy, very happy. It looks beautiful.
Wonderful.
And I just had a quick question because I have the app on my phone, and I was wondering, because I do pretty much everything on my phone.
Okay.
You're like one of the kids.
I know.
I'm like the old people. I do everything on my computer. I'm like, what? I can't do that on my phone. My phone doesn't do that.
Really old-looking millennial. So as far as the phone app, it often sends you to a dead end. I don't know why that is.
Yeah, I haven't advertised it yet because actually Mr. Gartner is helping me on that one. He and I are still working out the kinks.
Well, the app is the app. I mean, I just, you know, I've come to expect nothing, but as far as that goes, I've always kind of just shifted over to my...
To the full site?
Full site.
Yeah.
And that, I haven't checked it out on the phone, but that was my question, was is it user-friendly on a phone?
Yes, a great question. So I found it to be really user-friendly on the phone.
Okay.
So the app that Michelle's referring to can be downloaded from the Apple App Store, and did we find out if Droid has it yet or no? We don't know, Michelle?
I have it on Android.
Oh, you do?
But it's terrible. I mean, it doesn't have all the content that the full site has.
Okay. Yeah, so that probably means it's the same problem that Michelle's having.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
I don't think it's a...
So if you want to just hold off on the app another week or two?
I've given up on the app a long time ago. I go straight to the full site.
Yeah, go to HPschools.net on the mobile site, and there's a special mobile version that'll come up, and it should have all the content.
Okay, okay.
Maybe we should just get rid of the app, or just, you know, I mean, it's, we don't really need both, right? An app and the mobile version?
Yeah. I don't know, we'll see.
Seems like a lot of work.
Yeah, we'll play with it.
I don't know, maybe, I know at the high school, they have several courses on web design. I don't know if that's a special project. The students, right? The students need to know how to develop their own apps.
I should see if I can put them in touch with tech support and just have them go back and forth.
Mr. Harper's going to kill me, right? Like, I just...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, that's, so thank you. We'll work on the app. Any other feedback, I'm open to, so...
It looks great.
Let's keep lines of communication open on that. The other thing I want to touch on briefly as well, so I'm going to stay seated instead of doing my walk-around, because I've only got a few slides to share, is the latest happenings involving two student leader groups, of which I'm really proud. Team Pep and Sources of Strength make up between the two, 28 students, couple crossover kids, not all students who are your, you know, typical high achievers, get involved in everything. We're talking about students who might be, you know, hiding behind the scenes, who have leadership potential, who've taken on more responsibility. They make up Team Pep and Sources of Strength. So I just want to remind the community, the board, of what these organizations are, and I want to show you a couple of up-to-date videos I shot. Right now, Team Pep is made up of 13 juniors and seniors. Next year, we think we'll be opening it up to as many as 20 students. I spoke to the coordinator of Team Pep a couple of weeks ago, who actually visited the diversity celebration dinner, and she said that we could accommodate up to 20 students. So we're looking to open it up, and we've already gotten, I think, over 25 prospective students interested next year.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's taken off. I mean, the kids are, I don't know if Avery has had any interaction with Team Pep, but I know students are really high on it. Is that your take on it?
Yeah, people really like the program, generally, is what I think.
Cool.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was very popular when it went away. Like, I don't think it ever declined in popularity. It just kind of was one...
Remind me what the Pep stands for?
That's a good question. I never thought to ask.
Piers, educating peers.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to upstage you, it's just that...
So right now, it's supported by one faculty member, that's Terry Mitchell, and one supervisor, that's Elizabeth Azamoah. We know that there may be some changes in personnel as a result of the budget next year. We do have a potential teacher who will take on the program if the home economics program is unfortunately cut as it suggested.
It is.
I'll have final word on that Monday night.
Michelle?
Yes.
Actually, the teen prevention education program.
Oh, I was wrong. I apologize.
It sounded good to me.
It sounded really good.
I was looking it up at the same time. I wasn't checking you.
So maybe my source was faulty then, I'm sorry.
So the kids, the supervisors, the teachers, they go for training. Last summer in August, they went on a retreat, so the training took place off-site. This year, it'll take place onsite in late June. We anticipate, if there's a new teacher taking this on, that that person will be involved in the training. It's comprised of packaged curricula based on researched practices, and it's intended for grade-nine students. So right now, our Team Pep kids are pushing into science classes in ninth grade on a semi-monthly basis. Here's a clip that, if you listen, I think the audio is good on this clip. I took, back in the fall, which I never showed the board, the community, of a students preparing in their first-period class, they meet every day, first period, all right, period A, I should say, not first period, period A, to prepare the lessons, and here's some role play that they did as they were preparing for a couple of lessons.
Hi, we are Team Pep. Team Pep stands for Teen Prevention, Teen Prevention and Education Program. We are a mix of juniors and seniors who are trained on leadership and sexuality issues. Today, we're going to do a workshop on sexual decision-making, and we're going to be doing a shit called "It's Wait a While: Postponing Sexual Involvement." My name is Andy.
My name is Kaylee.
I'm Maria.
And I'm Maria.
We're here today to talk about sexual decision-making. Why do some teens have sex, and why do some teens choose to wait? It's really important to think about who we are and what we want before becoming sexually active.
Some reasons teens have sex is because they feel pressure, or to rebel, or to prove themselves, or to try to keep a partner. On the other hand, many teens choose to be abstinent. That means not having oral, vaginal, or anal sex. Lots of people choose abstinence because they aren't ready for moral or religious reasons, or because they don't want to deal with the possible consequences. Abstinence is the only 100% effective way to prevent pregnancy, HIV, and other sexually transmitted infections.
Sex is all around us, in the movies, TV shows, and even music, and they may make it seem like it's no big deal, so it's hard to tell if you're ready or not for the physical and emotional consequences that come with it. So it's very confusing for some people, but we're here to help. If we take some time to think about what we want inside our own boundaries, we're more likely to make healthy decisions. It's important to remember that all teens are having sex, and whatever decisions we make, we need to stand up for our feelings and beliefs while respecting our partners. The next few skits are going to show us some encounters that certain teens face. This will show how awkward the first visit can be.
So...
So, yeah.
So, do you want to do anything?
Right.
You know, like, what do you want to do?
Well, I'm just, like, hanging out here.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, man, why is this so hard? I really like Cory, and I want to kiss him stuff, and I feel like it's a mutual feeling, but what if I'm wrong? What if I'm actually in the friend zone? Or what if Cory expects me to go further? I don't know how to do this. You know Cory. I, uh...
What?
I really like being here, too.
This is so awkward. Why doesn't Danny just kiss me and get it over with? I really like Danny, and I want to kiss, but if I make the first move, maybe it'll seem like I want to do more than that, and I really don't. You know, Danny, if you have something to ask me, you should just go ahead. It's okay.
Really?
Really.
I mean, Cory...
Danny, is it okay if I kiss you?
Yeah, that would be great.
But that's all I want to do.
Okay, good, me too. But there's a lot of people in here. Maybe later.
This skit shows the importance of knowing your boundaries and communicating with your partner, whether it's the first time or any time after that. This is an example of how you can give consent for behaviors you're comfortable with.
It's also important to ask your partner to make sure that you have their permission. This is an example of how you can seek consent from your partner. You may think it's awkward to check out your sexual behavior, but it really doesn't have to be. You could just say, "CJ, are you okay?" Or, on the other hand, you could say...
"Maria, do you want me to stop?" See, consent can be easy.
Just be sure you're willing to listen and hear the answer to your question, and respect your partner's wishes. The next skit shows us how some people feel pressured to lie about sexual behavior.
I'm going to move on to the next slide. I'm almost going to try to put my mic up to the speaker this time to see if it can hear better. I was really, really proud of our kids a couple of weeks ago. Those of you who were able to make it to the diversity celebration dinner saw this presentation. These are our Team Pep kids again, presenting a different angle of their lessons that they give to the ninth graders. Let's see if I can make this work better. Audio.
[unintelligible]
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 I love our kids. That was fantastic. The other, yeah, that was just phenomenal. The other group that has been doing tremendous work around the school is Sources of Strength. This group comprises 15 students. We also have two faculty, Christine Krieger and Kim Holman, at the teen center supporting these guys. I mentioned that this is the group that is responsible for putting those positive message post-it notes over the lockers. I showed you some photos about a month ago, randomly, one day. Their work is mostly to serve their peers who are in need of mental health support, so those who might be expressing suicide ideation could come to a Source of Strength, so a leader in their peer group, who can then help them get the right support. These kids are not trained to be therapists, they're not trained to provide the counseling, they're just trained to be the go-between, between the counselor, the support people, and their peers who need help. But they're also helping to change as best they can the culture of the high school and move it into as positive a direction as possible. This is a photo of me and the kids who came together to do a workshop at an ed camp that we sponsored Saturday, April 6th. Ed Camp is a half-a-day-long series of workshops that people put on for their peers. We brought about 100 mental health professionals and educators from around the metropolitan region. We had people from New York coming, Philadelphia, they all came together here. In my Taylor notes this Thursday, you'll read more about what workshops were presented, but the focus of this ed camp experience was social, emotional wellness. And these kids, our Sources of Strength kids, actually did two workshops for adults, and they were, as far as I can tell, the most positively received workshop facilitators. The adults in the room were just floored. I have a clip, actually, of them presenting right here to, again, mental health professionals, counselors, teachers, we had some professors in the room.
We have family support. We have positive friends. Mentors.
So the intent here is to show you, give you visual of them in action. They were charismatic, they were articulate, confident, they had great presence. In fact, I've gotten numerous emails from participants who want more information from them, and have even asked if some of our students can come, make a presentation to their faculty in one of their school districts. That's how, that's how popular they were. So that's, that's it. I just wanted to keep you in the loop about two, two groups, of which I'm really proud. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I had a brief comment, which is, I wanted to thank the Board of Health, and also to the student rep to the Board of Health, Marzia, who, she initially brought it to the attention of the Board of Health about two years ago, also to my attention, that the Teen Pep had been an excellent program here, and that it had, had fallen off, I think, when a faculty member left. And then she pushed very hard to the Board of Health, but also, Marzia this is, to also internally in the schools, to try to help make this happen, and I think the board got enough, Board of Ed got enough push and enough positive thoughts about doing this program that we, we made it happen. But they really got, she especially got the ball rolling and made presentations to the Board of Health as well, and the program sounds fantastic. So thanks to her, thanks for the help from the Board of Health, and I'm glad we did it.
Anne, you have a second? Yeah, just quickly, could you give us a quick idea of how it actually looks in the school day? I mean, are there, do they offer presentations on a sort of intermittent basis?
Team Pep?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, yeah, Team Pep, not Sources of Strength.
So, yeah, so the kids will come out of their classes, usually they'll take a full day out of a month, and be relieved of their classes, the 13 students, and spend the five periods taking over, I think right now it's Ms. Stefan's class, ninth grade science class, and spending that period, entire period, presenting a lesson like you just saw. And that might happen once a month, sometimes twice a month, depending on how many times they need to see a similar cohort of ninth graders to complete the entire curricula.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Do I recall you saying that there was intention to move the Sources of Strength program down to the middle school level?
Yeah, there's been talk about doing that. That's the hope.
Do we have, like, an action plan to make that happen for next year?
Not yet. Budget constraints have hurt us just a little bit because we need to, there is, it takes some funding to provide the training.
Well, remember, we have someone in town who's willing to do the training.
That's true.
She's, I mean, I'm sure she'd be more than happy to come back and help us get it down at the middle school level. And also, I happen to know somebody who's on the Board of High Tops, which is one of the groups where we get the Teen Pep program, so if, or not where we get the Teen Pep program, but I'm happy to reach out to that person as well and see if there are, you know, additional resources that might be available that we didn't know about.
I'll move on that. They move on that project that we had in mind and follow up the board next month.
Okay.
Fantastic, thank you.
I mean, it just, it sounds like, culture-wise, it may be helpful for the middle school to have a student-directed, positive peer-interaction program in place when the kids hit the ground running and so forth.
Very much so.
All righty, thank you. Anybody else have anything on either of those? Okay, thank you very much. Scott, so we're going to move on to the board committee reports. Michelle had to step out, but she will be back, so I'm going to propose that we skip over curriculum and we go to finance and move our way through, and then we will scoot back to curriculum, and hopefully Michelle will be back because Rob apparently has no voice.
Not really. Yeah.
Sounds...
It would be difficult.
Ow, sorry.
Thank you.
That's your punishment for going somewhere warm and sunny over break. Yeah, sitting there with your tan, I have little sympathy. Sympathy, sympathy level goes way down when you're sitting there tan, but I do have sympathy. Finance, Mark?
Yes.
Could you go through the agenda with us, please?
Yes, so we went over most of these at our April 15th meeting. There's one new item, well, there's several. Item four is new. That's a new athletic bill list and the amount of $314. Items numbers six through nine, which are also embold, those will be tabled per Linda's request. Going on, I did want, again, as last time, to thank Lexus on number item 15. It's an old item, but I wanted to thank them again for the, for the grant of $2,000 for science equipment, and I wanted to also thank the Highland Park Education Foundation for grants of over $4,000 to, to of our teachers for programs, programs in the high school. So we also have item number 26, which is the, a new item, which is a board member travel Darcy's going to the NJSPA Delegate Assembly Meeting in West Windsor on May 18th. And then 27 and 28, which are also new, are recommendation to fix the pipe insulation at the middle school. And of course, 27 are the bids, and 28 is the recommendation to accept the contract with Pipe Design LD of East Hanover, New Jersey, for a cost of $8,648.61. And so that's the, that's the added notes for the report from last time.
All right, thank you, Mark. Anybody have any questions on any of the agenda items for Mark? No? All right, thank you. So we'll move on to personnel. Anne?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Hello? Okay, there we go. Okay, so we went over most of these, as with finance, at our last meeting. There are a few new items that are pretty self-explanatory. Number nine, a medical disability leave extension. Number 10, a family leave extension. Scrolling, scrolling. We have a resignation of our reading interventionist, Ms., is it Yuan or, am I pronouncing that right? Yuan or Yuan?
Yuan.
Yuan, okay. Sorry, Ms. Yuan. Resignation of a guidance counselor at Irving. And, let's see, a new job coach slash parent professional at the high school. Is that for the glow program, Scott?
Yes.
Cool, okay. Number 19. Number 20, leave repla-
It's for the glow program.
Great, thank you. Leave replacement para at Bartle.
That's it?
Yeah, slowly scrolling, and that is it.
Okay. I did notice also there were some tweaks, it looks like, to number seven, like some of the dates were changed.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, let me just-
No, that's okay. I just happened to notice it was in, they were bolded.
In 2,000 years, I'll be up there. Ah, yes, I'm sorry, the medical leave of absence on number seven, the dates were changed. I don't remember what they were originally, but, you know, they're slightly different today.
There you go. All right. Anybody have any questions on any of the personnel items? No? Okay. Thank you, Anne. So we'll move on to policies, Mark?
Yeah, before I go on policies, I did want to say that the finance committee, just to add to finance, met before our session started this evening, and we did talk about the state of the budget, where we are still looking for additional funds. And we will be meeting again this week on Thursday, because our budget has to be presented next week. And went over some of the areas where the administration could make changes so that we could fit into the budget that we have to propose to the state with the budget cap that the school district has to take. So we're meeting again Thursday, and we will have budget numbers next Monday. Just wanted to not forget that, and I apologize for missing that. For policies, we do have a policy for first reading, which is the organizational chart. In the interim, we did meet on, I'm looking for the date, we did meet on April 16, and we did go through a number of policies, including lateness policy, attendance policy, physical restraint policy, and students in, quote, "high poverty" school districts, which are policies, all of which we need to have or need to modify. And we will be just doing one further go-through read on those, but we anticipate those will be on the May calendar. So we will have those four in the May calendar. And those were kind of tricky, because the lateness and attendance, there are a lot of issues around those. So when you get them, if it's this week or next week, please review. They're not simple. And then we're going to meet again on May 14, and we have some other new items. We have another whole list of things to keep current on. And Rob, we did review, or I reviewed at least with Scott, the issue of loner equipment. And there is a policy, and we're going to review the policy in the next meeting, so that there'd be no conflicts with the computer loner program that we'll be taking into effect next year. So that's what we are.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Mark? No? Well, we don't have Monique here for Equity and Excellence. Anyone on that committee? Have you guys met, or?
Yes, so we have a meeting coming up this week.
Okay, so you guys can report out on that.
We will report next week.
Next week's meeting, since we have another meeting in next week.
I can share that one of the things we're going to tackle is the MOA with the law, with local law enforcement.
Okay.
And I know we're taking a deep dive.
All right. Sounds good. Well, Michelle is still not back for the curriculum agenda, so Linda, I'm going to propose that we move on to public comment, and we'll just come back to Michelle when she gets back. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to public comment. I know you know the routine, Anna.
Well, actually, I haven't been here in a long time. My bad. So, Amanda Parra, I live at 344 Becker Street. I happen to be a faculty in the Department of French at Rutgers, and I will speak in that capacity mostly today. Okay, so I watch with a lot of interest the discussion that happened at the last meeting for 15. And so I'm now going to repeat the points, excellent points that were made by Mrs. Havas and the students who contributed and the parents who contributed. They were all excellent points. And I think we don't need to discuss the respective merits of Mandarin and French, because obviously, in world language education, more is more, right? You need, the more language you can offer, the better. A district offering three languages in high school will be a much better district than a district offering two languages. I think those points were made, I just want to phrase them from, I want to approach this from another angle and also summarize what has happened since then. And the, you know, the proposal in particular that the group of Rutgers faculty and community members have been working on for almost six weeks now, so I want to give you a sense of what that proposal entails. So I hope to summarize it effectively. My partners in crime, one of them is on route to France, so, you know, he sent me over there, over here, to present the numbers, which is not my area of expertise, right? I'm a world language teacher. And I will talk about, from the perspective, from the finishing, from the perspective of the finishing line, right? We talk a lot about college readiness. That's, our goal is to prepare students who will be college-ready, life-ready, you know, who will go on different pursuits in life, maybe college, maybe something else, but there's, obviously, sending them into the world with a good baggage in world languages is one of the best things that we can do for all our students. So I want to, you know, plead on behalf of keeping three languages in high school. It's, and you'll tell me, oh, but we can't afford it, blah, blah, blah. We can't afford it. Yes, we can afford it. Okay? So we have looked at the numbers, we can afford it. So we need the will to run the numbers. It's a major decision to cut language, to go from three to two, and next is one, because, I mean, I'll discuss, I can discuss this in detail, I don't want to be too passionate. So I'll read it, I'll read what I have, and then we can discuss if you wish, without taking too much of your time. So Highland Park Schools currently employ teachers of Spanish, French, and Mandarin. Thus, the school has a valuable, extremely valuable infrastructure for diverse language offerings. Preserving all three programs would be a great service to district students. Now, this is not the way we're going, right? We discontinue French in high school, replace it with Mandarin Chinese, and now we're phasing out French and replacing it with Mandarin, as scheduled in the discussion two years ago. I don't really want to revisit that discussion, but I feel strongly that there was not enough analysis of, you know, enrollment projections, there was not enough consideration, what we have, what populations we were serving. It was a rushed decision. It was made, it started with a staffing decision, and then morphed into a budget decision, right? And what was left, left out is the curriculum, and the curriculum is the most important piece, I think, in what we do.
I do just want to make one correction on it. It was never a budget decision. At the time that the decision was made, it just, that keeps coming up, that this was done as a budget decision? It was purely a staffing decision.
Okay, it was a staffing decision, but now we, if we want to, the implication is, if we want to, well, let's say this, I don't think such a significant decision to phase out French in the entire district should be done on the basis of a staffing situation that's, you know, at one time. And I know, because I know people who were in that committee, that a significant effort was done to find a person to staff that position. I teach at Rutgers. I teach French. I think you know me. Nobody reached out to me, do you know anybody who can teach French in our district? It's as simple as that. You reach to Mary Kern, who is in the Graduate School of Education. As it is at the moment, there's nobody that's pursuing certification in French in the Graduate School of Education. So she couldn't come up with a good option, should you have reached to the French department. We have students, graduate students who can teach French. We also have a network. We offer an MAT. The MAT is a program that trains certified teachers who want to, for professional development. So our pool of people is one of certified teachers of French. So we can pass a message to our entire pool of trainees that we have. So I'm not saying you didn't do the right things, but I can't imagine you can claim to have done an extensive search without contacting, you know, the Rutgers French department.
Scott, do you want to go through the list of places that you contacted? Because it wasn't just the Graduate School of Education.
Yeah, so I'm actually going to show you something on the-
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Oh, sure, I'll wait until you finish.
I don't want to look at the past.
Okay, but you're bringing up the past, and you're making statements that I don't know that jive with what-
Let's have that discussion. I just want to have, I want to make sure I have a chance to present what we want to do moving forward.
Please do.
I'm soliciting while I'm changing the monitor.
Go ahead, Anna, you can continue.
All right. So again, it was a staffing decision, right? So we are now suffering from a staffing decision two years ago. Things might have taken, if it was a staffing decision, you know, it didn't need a staffing decision two years ago.
Okay, wait, can I just, you keep saying-
Yes, okay.
You keep saying we're not going to talk about the past, but then you keep talking about the past. So if you want to talk about what the proposal is, then we can respond to the proposal, but you keep saying you don't want to talk about the past, but then you keep talking about it.
Yes, furthermore, I wrote in a message, the one message, the one communication, I wrote a little bit about the process and, you know, relatively low input of the community. I understand only 3% of parents and guardians completed the survey. It's a very small sample. I'm not sure students were consulting either back then, two years ago, or now, because now, see, the reason why we're-
Where's the 3% number coming from, Scott? The 3% number that keeps getting thrown out?
Revisiting-
Yeah.
The reason why we're revisiting this at this point is because next year, in fall, '19 is stage two of this, yes, when you don't teach French in ninth grade anymore. And next year, you don't teach French in 10th grade, so you shrink the French program. So now we're moving it to the high school. So a staffing decision that affected the middle school has this impact, you know, in the entire district, anyway. So the current tentative plan is to phase out the French program and to grow the Mandarin program. Our pitch and our hypothesis is that alternative proposals to maintain all three world languages are feasible, not in middle school, but in high school. So there are ways to maintain the three world language programs in the high school, which would be prudent, because the decision to discontinue French in high school was done, yes, was done before any Mandarin had been taught in the high school. My point is, if you, a decision of that caliber can only be done once Mandarin has been introduced in the high school and we have a serious idea of what the enrollment projections will be in the high school. So phasing it up without ever teaching Mandarin in the school is taking the risk of killing a very successful program. There were more than a hundred students enrolled in French in 217, 218, right? With a program that might be serving a quarter of that population. And the risk is to create, I mean, frankly, I know, you know, I know the sensibilities of the world. Do you really want to create a hidden, gifted, and talented program in the school through this Mandarin track? Do you really want to do that? Because that's one of the scenarios possible. The other scenario is that the population of people taking, now there's 51 students taking Mandarin in middle school. 51, it's not huge. There were, almost half of the students in the middle school taking French when it was discontinued, right? So 51, what's going to be the enrollments next year in ninth grade? How many students are taking Mandarin in ninth grade next year?
Is that a rhetorical question, or do you want me to answer?
No, I don't know.
I can't, I can't give you numbers until I go back to the enrollment and look at it again and analyze it.
How many were there this year in ninth grade?
It wasn't offered.
It wasn't offered?
How many students?
Yeah, it was offered, right?
Look, I'm, that's all, these are all questions I'd be glad to answer in public next week, once I have the information in front of me, but I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
Neither do I, but my point is that to make predictions that then have budget implications, because that is something, right? The decision wasn't made on budget grounds, but it has, could have implication in future years that we have to hire another teacher of Mandarin. That's a budget implication, right?
No. I mean, that's not how it was, that's not how the plan was devised, so that we would maintain what we have now, which is two programs, or what we had prior to this. The intention was never to have three programs, as Mr. Krieger has talked about multiple times. The district hasn't had three language programs since the 80s.
1989, I was on the school board, which eliminated German. That wasn't eliminated, discontinued because of lack of teachers. That was eliminated because we only had about 10 students still taking German. That saw a large angry outflux from a very small handful of parents, even though those students were given private tutoring so they could finish four years or five years of German studies in high school as the program was eliminated. But we haven't had three languages in Highland Park, three full languages in Highland Park for 30 years, 1989 through, really through this past year.
Actually, I think we did it just a few years ago when we also offered Hebrews.
Wait, yes, but it wasn't a full program.
The Hebrew wasn't really a full program.
It wasn't a full program. We ran Hebrew 1 and Hebrew 2. And that was under duress, and it was severely undersubscribed.
Yeah, it wasn't a full program. It was a few students as well, and we couldn't afford to do that either, as we couldn't afford to do a German program with a handful of students.
And as anyone recalls, the reason we brought Hebrew in was to try to avert a million, multimillion-dollar charter school. So at that point, multimillion-dollar charter school versus Hebrew 1 or Hebrew 2 made more sense.
Right.
Our budget situation now is much more dire, so this is a very difficult time to talk about now going to three full programs.
And when we eliminated the Hebrew, I think there were four or five kids taking it.
Right.
So there were multiple good reasons not to continue.
This is always, you know, decisions are made on the basis of enrollments. That was not the case of French. The French program, when it was eliminated, was very well-enrolled, and actually, distribution in middle school was almost ideal. I mean, you don't want a quarter of the students taking one language and 75%-
Anna, make sure you stay with your mic, sorry.
You don't want a quarter of the student taking one language and 75% of the students taking another language. Why? Because then you have a tracked, tracked instruction in world languages. So it's really not smart to detract math and track world languages by, you know, by happenstance, right?
Anna, I will tell you, we will definitely look at the demographics of those two programs and see if what you're saying is the case. I don't think it's inherent that that's going to create a tracked system. So we'll certainly take a look at that. If that becomes an issue, then we will make sure to address it, because that's a priority of this board, is to avoid tracking. So we're certainly not looking to create that within our world language program.
Darcy, can I ask a question about that?
So my point is, before you eliminate, like, the third option, which is French, let's make sure that we're not creating a tracked system. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. So let's just kind of put some elements on the table. So Highland Park currently employs two middle school Spanish teachers, three high school Spanish teachers, one Mandarin teacher that's split between the middle school and the high school, and one high school French teacher. The tentative plan is to phase out the French program and expand the Mandarin program. Replace, it's a replacement model, except that already it's not working, because you have 51 students in Mandarin in the middle school. So it hasn't, you know, the population taking that same language has shrunk. So the, on year, what, two or three of this implementation, it's not the replacement model anymore, it's the tracking model that has-
Can we call it something different than tracking? Because I don't know what you're, you're saying that, but I don't, we don't have any evidence that it's tracking. I don't, you don't know what students are in that class. I mean, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't have those numbers.
Right, so I just, I feel funny calling it that.
What is the assumption? Is the assumption that, like, the gifted children will take Mandarin and non-gifted children will take Spanish? Is that what we're saying here?
No, I'm saying that-
I don't understand.
There's an imbalance in the number, 25 percent.
Right, but what about the tracking that you're, what is tracking?
A balance in the number isn't tracking. That's, those are two different phenomenon.
Well, I mean, it's a concern. It's a concern-
I don't know why.
-that our resources, it's a concern that the school resources are used to serve, you know, that we use, that the Spanish classes are over-enrolled and then that we serve-
But that's different than tracking.
That's not tracking.
I could use another, I just don't know, you know, bifurcated, whatever you want to call it, but-
Well, it's imbalanced, the numbers are imbalanced, but the numbers were, now they're more imbalanced. I hear your point, that the numbers are more imbalanced than they were between Spanish and French. When it was Spanish and French, there were more Spanish students and there were French students. Now there's a lot more Spanish students than there are Mandarin students. So I hear that point, but we're bristling at the tracking peanut.
And this hidden GNT program.
Because I don't, I don't know the demographics of those students, and I don't want to make assumptions.
It's a little bit, it's a little bit tragic, but I know that it's an issue that's important to use. I just want to make sure that before we do something drastic that may have implications at that level, I'm not saying that is the case. I'm not, I'm not assuming that a certain population is taking a certain language, et cetera, et cetera. Those would be assumptions that, you know, would be just wrong to make, but we can be careful that this not happen, and, you know, there's ways to, I don't know, there's ways to do that. Anyways, so, expanding the Mandarin program. This means first hiring another part-time Mandarin teacher and then likely converting that position to full-time when the French program is fully discontinued. So as we start offering Mandarin, well, what you call a full program, as we start offering Mandarin in high school, we will need possibly, certainly, a part-time teacher, if not a full-time teacher. Again, that second teacher of Spanish is serving a small population. So in terms of investment of resources, having two teachers of Mandarin to serve a relatively small population, and I'm not saying it's worth it, I absolutely, it's absolutely worth it, but we have to be, I think we have to share resources, and in a way, this is the model that happens this year, right? So in a more positive way. So we, so- So we, so the drawbacks of the current plan. This plan means the outright loss of the French program and relies on the assumption that the Mandarin program will grow, right? That's an assumption. We don't know that this is going to happen. Maintaining French, which is the source, maintaining French has many advantages that have been discussed at length last time, so I won't repeat it. So the question is, why choose a large Mandarin program? So basically, we have the resources to offer three languages. If perhaps we don't offer three, we do, we run the numbers. I mean, for six weeks now, Rob Scott, me, and some other, we've been running numbers and we've, we've tried to work with corrections and there's a lot of consultation. We haven't come up with this plan like ex nihilo. We consulted with the principal, we consulted with the superintendent, we've consulted with world language professional, so this, and we've taken, we've taken what they, their feedback.
So, Anna...
We've modified the numbers. We have a final version of this plan that will be sent to you tomorrow. I mean, the Excel, we have put it in an Excel spreadsheet. I thought, you know, this, what I'm presenting now, it's starting not to make a lot of sense, but I have it in writing, so you can read it. And then tomorrow you'll have the numbers. We discussed several options and...
Anna, make sure you go back to the mic. I just want to make sure you're picked up.
Okay, so the concept, I heard we don't have the means to offer a full program. So I think one, I'm not going to tell you how to teach world languages. I'm just going to tell you that we now have the staff to teach three languages and we're choosing to kill French and to give up an excellent program in French for the benefit of a program that we don't know, we don't know if that program will be successful. It will only be successful if Mandarin attracts, I mean, successful intellectually, but also budget-wise, if that population attracts at least as many students as French did, which was considerable.
So Anna, we're going on 20, almost 25 minutes, and this is your meeting, so you're welcome to manage it as you wish. However, I bring that up because I need to, Anna, I need to also...
I put the main version of that phone, get the numbers.
I want to also, I bring that up because I need to let the board know and the community know that I feel confident that I am working closely with you and Jenny Chapman and Rob Scott, all of whom reached out to me, with a plan that frankly I thought was very well put together. I can assure you that over the last three weeks, since we have met twice in person and since I have dived deeply into that plan, not only have I analyzed it through and through, but I've also shared the plan with the committees who need to be involved in the discussion about this. And my intent is by the end of this week to make a final recommendation about your plan. Not a final recommendation about French. That's still on the table, was made two years ago, but a final recommendation about how we work with the plan that you're suggesting, because I cannot let any more time go beyond this week before I, we start, we lose the ability to start scheduling our students at the high school for next year. So with that, a thank you, unless there's anything else you'd like to share? Unless you want to give more airtime?
Are we out of public, in public comments time? Are we out of time for public comments?
We're not, you're not near the mic, Anna.
Yes, are we out of public comment time?
Well, we, we've done a lot of back and forth, so we try not to make it a, you know, a huge conversation, but, I mean, because we've gone over this. So if you have anything else you want to address to the board then...
No, I just want to say that we've been working on this very seriously, very intensely for six weeks and that I hope you will read what we'll send you. This is just the introduction. And we have maybe people in the finance committee can take a close look at the numbers that we run. And they're all only like possibilities and it's not up to us to schedule or to decide what we'll be, what you will teach, if you will teach two languages in middle school, three languages in high school, or maybe just Spanish in middle school, three languages in high school. There's a lot of possibilities. Anyway, before we run out of time for follow comments, I do have a second item I want to bring to your attention, and that's the, you know, the hate, the hate website that was published a few weeks ago. And I just want to know, I know we don't have time, so I just want to ask the district, what has been done since we received that statement, that statement by the principal of the middle school? I can tell you what I have done, but maybe we don't have time. I just want to announce there's a pass for this...
Anna, stay by your mic.
Sorry. Anyways, I want to ask, let me ask you, who should I, there's been no communication since that statement was sent to only parents in the middle school and guardians, and there's a lot of concern and there's groups also outside of the school interested in knowing what actions have been taken. And I just want to know who I should address my questions.
Sure, so you're welcome to reach out to Mrs. Osemie. However, I don't think she'll be able to provide you detailed information because at this point, what we have deduced is that we are, that incident stemmed from actions that took place among, even though I recognize that, you know, hate and bias is an issue that this country is confronting across the board, right now, this particular issue revolved around six particular students. So we're treating each student individually for his needs and we can't comment on those, as you know, because that's confidential information. So you're welcome to reach out to Mrs. Osemie, but I can't guarantee she's going to be able to provide you that much detailed information.
Yeah, I don't need detailed information. I need to know that my child is safe in school tomorrow, and today he was not safe in school. That's all I want to say.
Absolutely.
And that's why I'll share with the principal.
Scott, could I just request with the spreadsheet that is coming in, you'll distribute that to the finance committee or, when that comes in?
Regarding French?
Right. Their spreadsheet that they send in tomorrow.
Oh yes, I'll share, of course. Great. And I do want, say, say one last thanks since I put the document up on the screen that Darcy referred to earlier. I need the community to know, especially those who were just walking into this conversation about French and why French was phased out, how this whole thing started. Back in 2016, 2017, we lost a middle school French teacher. And it happened in December, actually it happened in November. We scrambled to, I'll enlarge that for you, Anna. We scrambled to find a replacement for that teacher, but like so many of my colleagues still having the problem, we could not find a suitable replacement. And what I'm sharing here is a timeline and some other information at the bottom of the document, I'll share in a second, of the steps we took to recruit. Now, besides posting ads from, gosh, November to July in all the major newspapers and job websites, we also reached out to the Graduate School of Education. We had the high school French teacher make contacts with her network, including individuals at all of the colleges and universities you see here listed. And then it just so happens that our middle school principal, Ms. Osemie, was a world language teacher and she is quite involved in her network. So with all of this, we, oh, and here you can also see we reached out to Flange, the Foreign Language Educators in New Jersey, the Rutgers University World Languages Institute, the Pathway to Career Advancement for Novice and Experienced K-12 Language Educators, the Language Center, on and on and on. We spent almost $7,000, but still, and by the way, did whatever it took. We Skyped with individuals in France, on and on and on. We still could not find somebody after that half a year, multi-thousand-dollar research. And there, by the way, our school districts still struggling to fill those positions. So that's how this whole thing started. I don't want anybody to be misled to think that we just decided we were not going to run a French program anymore. We struggled and this is where we are now. So I promise I will get back to the finance committee with whatever information I get from the parents and go from there.
Scott, it says December 17th. Could you scroll down a bit? No, on the next, second page. Yeah, it says Susan Allswang hired for the, what does that mean?
That's substitute for to...
Oh, yeah.
Substitute.
Substitute. We, we had a long-term replacement sub we found at the middle school, but had to terminate, well, had to part ways was the termination. So that didn't work out. Wasn't qualified. We tried, didn't work out. So then I shared this misinformation. So I just bring that up because I want people to be aware of how this whole started, how this whole thing started. We did not just randomly choose a language and decide to phase it out.
We had numerous, almost emergency committee chair meetings, not a quorum, just several of us, to try to work on, how can we find somebody? We spent hours and hours and hours. And apparently, and Scott talked to the other superintendents around the state, they couldn't find anyone. And that's the entire problem. As it, as would be if, so we don't, we have one French teacher. We don't have a backup like a middle school French teacher and a high school French teacher. So at some point, the high school French teacher, Ms. Havas, would leave or retire, we would then have 60 students we would have to find a teacher for, and we can't find a teacher.
But we're not going to keep going back and forth.
Yeah, I don't want to go back and forth. I just want to tell you what the board fears. The fear which we went through in Germany of finding, the fear of finding, the fear of us finding, it's not about money. It's about the fear of finding ourselves in the position that the board in 1989 found of, we're terminating German, we're stopping the program, how are we going to find even a tutor for our nine or 12 students? And thank God we found somebody who was certified enough to tutor those nine or 12 students. But if we had 60 and no teacher and no one can find a teacher, it would be a disaster for the district. That's our real concern and that is the concern and something the board really cares about and has been discussing. You know, we can't, we can only discuss in public while we're in public. But I love French. I learned French, became fluent in French when I lived in Geneva. I would love to keep French. I, if we, if we had any chance that we believed that there were a dozen available French teachers, then or now, we would have a different perspective. We don't have confidence that we won't be left high and dry trying to finish the four years of French or the five years or the three years for the 60 students who would be taking French.
Right, but Anna, 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 you can't, you can't go back and forth from your seat. You just can't.
I've tried to address your question.
All right, let's...
Hi, I just, I've been listening carefully and my name is Darah Botfenick. I live at 348 Becker Street. And this is kind of hard to come up and say. I'm speaking as a community member. I'm also a teacher in the district. And some of the recent incidents in the news and in our school have really affected me very, very deeply. And I've spoken to administration, we've had open conversations, and I'm so grateful for those conversations. I want to speak about the fact that we need to name bias. We need to name the kinds of biases that come out to the community. I feel, I know there are issues of privacy, but if there are issues that are anti-Semitic in this day and age, we need to say anti-Semitic. If there are issues that are anti-gay, we need to say anti-gay. If they're anti-black, we need to say anti-black. And we need as a progressive district to have really, not strict, but really clear policies and professional development about how we deal with these issues. And I know the board has started to take some of this on and I'm very appreciative. And I think the scope is so much bigger than I've ever experienced in my career in terms of how do we handle these issues? And my voice is shaking because I don't know the answers. I don't think my colleagues know the answers. And I'm basically saying very, very clearly, we cannot sweep this under the rug. We need to explore how we help everyone open their minds and how we handle it when people are not open. And I really think it's important that we develop committees that work with the school, with the town, with the temples, with the churches throughout the entire community because we are a strong progressive community. And I have not yet heard the conversation that's really opening this up. And that's pretty much what I came to say tonight, that I appreciate us all working together and we honestly need to do more, a lot more. And I want to be a part of that. So I'm saying, sign me up for whatever we all think would help, but I want to help. Thank you.
Thanks, Darah.
Thank you.
Could I, Darcy, do you mind if I say something?
No.
I mean, it's speaking to Anna's comment as well. I mean, some of the incidents that I've heard about, you know, I have Jewish children and when I think about them going to school and hearing some of the things that, you know, the grapevine tells us have been going on, it is scary and it's not safe. So, I mean, I, I agree, I would like to hear, I would like us to talk, have a community discussion of some sort. I don't know what that would look like, involving some board members, administration, teachers. You know, this has to stop and I want it to stop without, you know, demonizing our children that are having issues with it. So I don't know, Scott, is anything like that planned to sort of...
So Darah and I actually had a meeting, I mentioned it to the board.
Oh, that's right.
Early one morning with a couple of other teachers. And all the things that Derek just mentioned, we discussed. And I wrote a lot of those things down, things like meeting with Ashton Burrell and the local, and John, I forgot his last name already, White.
Wentz?
Wentz, thanks. And the, and the commission here in town that focuses on these issues. Because I agree, we have to do more of the borough, I think, as well. This is a systemic problem.
And they have a new commission too.
So you're going to be hearing from me more about that. Just had this meeting right before break, so I haven't had a time to jump on these actions, but there are definitely things I'll be looking at.
Well, my understanding though is that you've also, as these incidents have been occurring, you've been in touch with the Anti-Defamation League, you've been in touch with Garden State Equality, trying to assess from them what the action steps should be when these kinds of issues come up in a school. I mean, obviously, it's very tricky when there are students and it's confidentiality issues and it's... And I feel like sometimes the response is, you know, like, I don't know that we always get clear guidance on what the right steps are, like, you know, can you speak to that at all?
I do get different people, different organizations telling me different things, but we're trying to take all those things and compile them. So for instance, the ADL suggested a program...
I just want to, I want you to kind of go through it a little bit because I don't want folks to get the impression that we're not talking to these organizations or that we're not labeling things. I mean, we're clearly seeing what the components of these things are and trying to reach out to the organizations, but I, I feel like a lot of the feedback you get is not have the assembly, you know, like not have the, like that, that's not the thing to do, you know? And to try to address it more directly with the parties involved.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, wait, let me, let Scott respond.
I think we need to all be reminded that we're trying to change the culture. We've been trying to do that for the last three or so years by including restorative practices, by focusing on cultural responsiveness. I know we did a lot of that work. Maybe it hasn't happened as much this year as it should have in our professional learning communities or our cultural responsiveness, taking the implicit bias assessment, trying to recognize what our hidden biases are, all as a means of us first as adults trying to help each other understand how we may be negatively impacting or micro-regressing against other people, not just macro-regressing, not just overt bias, but micro-bias as well, so that we can then model that for our kids. But, you know, more concretely, we've been, so as Darcy mentioned, you know, I've been working with Garden State Equality. We are slated to be one of the first schools, middle schools in particular, to be including the organization's new LGBTQ inclusive curriculum. It's not ready yet, but as soon as it is, we're on the docket to be absorbing it and I'm hoping that'll happen in September. I've been working with the ADL. They've been recommending a youth version of a program that we can try to incorporate into our in-school suspension model. We're in the throes of revamping our in-school suspension program, so it's more whole-child supportive. And the program that they're recommending, we could incorporate into the in-school suspension program.
Right, so instead of, I mean, no, I just want to point out that the idea being, when these kind of incidents arise inside the schoolhouse, not to then call the police or suspend the students, but to actually have a supportive environment within the school system that will use that time that we need to remove the students from the environment to actually teach them, to actually have a program available that is going to try to work on those biases and is going to try to educate those students. that is going to try to work on those biases and is going to try to educate those students because that's what we're here for, right? We're not here to send children to prison. We're not here to send students home and just let them sit there and get more angry and hateful. That's my biggest fear when these things come up, right? If, if our response as a community is the police or suspension, then, I mean, we've seen any of these number of students who get severely disaffected and violent. That's the pattern, right? I mean, the pattern is, they are ostracized, they are pushed out, they are, you know, they feel like other and then they feel like even more like other, you know? So, trying to figure out a way to work with them while still keeping the other kids safe. It is, it's this massive, massive, and teachers, you know? It's this massive balance of how do you meet everyone's needs and meet them where they are.
Yeah.
And that ADL program, if anybody wants to Google it, it's called Becoming an Ally: Responding to Name Calling and Bullying. So, we're looking at that and potentially implementing it in September of 2019.
Can I respond to that? That's so exciting that you've been speaking with the ADL. I just want to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the initial contact with the ADL, unless you called separately, came from me. So, what I want to tell you is, like, I'm so glad that we're following through as a district, but what I'm telling you is that there's nothing been in place. A lot of teachers have mobilized to create a response and administration, along with that, has created their own response. And I'm saying, and we've been working together, but what I'm saying to you as a board, quite honestly, is in meetings, restorative meetings, we have people who are saying that this is new territory, new ground, that everyone needs training, right? That this is, like, not everyone knows exactly how to handle it. And I'm saying that openly here. We don't really know how to handle it, but I'm telling you, some of the response has been a grassroots response. And what I'd like to see happen moving forward is a really, really concrete system in place for if this were to happen again, how we would handle it as a community, how we're moving forward, what systems are in place. And I'm so glad to hear that the ADL reached back and that we're talking about these programs. That's amazing. Okay, thank you.
I think the idea of having some kind of crisis response type of thing is a, is a good idea.
So, I'm going to talk about the discipline study group's work a little bit.
Sure.
Yep, so, good point. One of the things that, the community is probably not aware, but there are all these committees at work right now. So, we have two in particular that are focusing on just what you pointed out. The discipline study group, stakeholder group, I don't think you're on that one. And the central leadership team, which the board, the HPEA leadership is involved with in the leadership team. And we've all come up at the same point, same need. We've got to have like a flow chart, right? Or like a proper, a protocol, like you pointed out, that, that I think is going to, we're going to end up being able to codify sometime, ready over the summer for fall implementation. So, that when we have an issue like this, which by the way, is, I've been told by our teen center and by veterans, the incident we dealt with, first time of that magnitude, that we've had to confront that, at least in their recent memory. Because members of the teen center, who I thought handled it, have been handling it beautifully, thank God for them, still needed to do research in order to get there because it was the first time we've been hit with such a, such a profound problem. So, you're right, they've already asked for that. We're, we're prepared to do that. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Scott, can I just ask? I feel like the, the communication that came from the middle school, that very short terse message about what happened, was not adequate at that point and still is not adequate. I don't think that the public right now really knows what you're talking about. And you're presenting it as this major issue and, and Dara is as well. And it, people are going to be saying to themselves, well, what is going on there?
Okay.
So, I think that it behooves us, at this point, moving forward, to somehow communicate much more effectively with middle school and high school, the whole school community.
We've been advised, you know, we, we make decisions, the honeywell that was sent out was a collaboration among many people. It wasn't just Mrs. O who came up. I worked with her on it. We had some other people who we trust, help us. And the consensus was, find a balance between not panicking people, because while it was a big deal, it really, I'm seeing it as somewhat of a localized big deal right now.
I'm hearing it's a little bit more of, I, I mean, tonight is really the first time I'm kind of hearing it's more than what I've been presented. You know, I, and I'm not asking for details. I don't need names. I don't need pictures. But if it's something very big that's festering and growing, I want to know about that. You know, I live in this community also. I have children in the school. And I think the whole community needs to know about that.
Well, look, do we have a problem with bias like, yeah. Is it of the magnitude of the incident that occurred that involved a very small group of students? I don't think so. I don't think so. I, I'm in these halls, I'm not in the classroom, but I'm in those halls every day, for a couple of hours every day. You know, I'm very visible. I have a pulse. I live here. I, I might, my deduction is that we have an issue. We've got a lot of things in place to try to combat the issue. We still have more work to do that came, and some of the things that came out of that meeting are, is that work.
But can we put out a statement?
But we're not at DEFCON 5.
Can we put out a statement maybe on the website saying?
I don't know, I don't know if that would help or hurt the situation.
Right. Especially when it's a small group of students. We have to be careful.
But what I'm hearing is it's a small group of students, but it's a larger problem.
But it's still a small group of students.
But to put out a statement just saying, we are doing all of these things and name them, like you said, even the sources of strength and the teen PEP and all of those sort of, you know, programs that help students help each other and help faculty work with students, everything that enlarges and expands on our communications and our, you know, working with each other is great. Why can't we put it out there to people? Like, we, we know that you're all talking behind the scenes. We know that this is on social media. We want you to know that this is what we're doing. You know, people need to know that the school is actively naming what it is, number one, calling it what it is, and then addressing it. To do anything less than that, I think, is just not, not fair.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I don't know how to say it exactly because you're right. I mean, we hear about particular incidents and I don't think we want to advertise those incidents, you know, that those children are children and, you know, their confidentiality is really important. But, yeah, everybody in the community is talking about it. Kids are coming back and, you know, I know my kids report things that are said that are, you know, not within the scope of certain disciplinary issues. I mean, you know, we've just acknowledged that kids are kids and, you know, it's not surprising. We have some biased speech that goes on on a daily basis. But, yeah, it might be a good idea to put something on the website that points the community to these things we're doing. I don't know. What's next to think about?
I gave it some thought and I might be reaching out to you, Ruth. Anyhow, because I, I would need some guidance from you because I, I feel that what we did was sufficient, but I recognize that there's always different ways we can handle it. So, I'd like to hear back from you.
Okay.
Avery, you wanted to add something and then I think we have more public comments, so let's.
I guess I think what Ms. Byer is kind of getting at and what I'd like to kind of affirm is that, especially in like a smaller school district like Highland Park, there's often kind of an idea, and I know a lot of people have like said this, that we're kind of like this bubble of a district that, you know, we kind of like to sometimes not always see ourselves as like a really ultra-progressive, supportive school district. And I think that's frustrating, you know, coming from a perspective of a queer student because there is, the school district is no better than any other district in the nation in terms of hate speech. I think definitely we've done a lot of things legislatively in, in our policy to create a more accepting environment, but students still continue to produce and put out hate speech. In fact, the Saga group at the high school has been accumulating a report on different instances of hate speech and I believe it's been shared with all of you.
No.
No.
I think Dr. Taylor. Okay, yeah, I'll talk to Katia. But, and, yeah, so I think, I definitely understand that there's a fine line between acknowledging that there is an issue and then kind of promoting or reciprocating that issue and causing more of that issue to happen. And so, we need to, you know, kind of be careful not to cause the latter to happen. But I think there is definitely something to be said for acknowledging that, you know, we, along with every other school district and any organization or institution, have problems of bias and, you know, listing this is what we're doing to prevent that from happening and to combat this.
Or, I really hear the, like, these are our responses. This is our, like, our critical response team, you know, for these kind of incidences. Incidents, incidents. Thank you, Avery. And we look forward to getting that from Saga. So, if you can get in touch with somebody from there and say, they didn't get it.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hyman. I live at 216 Graham Street. I have two kids in Vardell. And I am panicking a little bit, a lot, because I, you know, I heard about the honeywell message, what's this recent incident in the middle school, but that also sparked other people, friends of mine to say, oh, yeah. And then there was this other anti-Semitic incident in the high school that I'm hearing about for the first time. And not just anti-Semitism, but all sorts of racism and bigotry. I am concerned that, that now we realize that we need to do more to be proactive and a response, a crisis response is important and critical. And if there's restorative justice, if there's a plan, then I think parents should know what that plan is and what's going to happen because, of course, we have to preserve and protect the privacy of the kids involved. But the other kids know what's going on because they hear about it. And maybe what they're hearing is not all accurate. I'm sure it's not all accurate. But they need to know that it's being taken seriously and that something's being done too. And they don't need to know about who's in in-school suspension or what that entails, but they need to.
Oh, they know that, too.
They know that, all right.
But they need to know that, that these kinds of incidents are being treated on the level that they need to be and deserve to be. And I, you know, the, I think parents really weren't aware of what exactly happened recently in the middle school because it was kind of a cryptic message and for good reason. I understand that the privacy has to be preserved. But I think that as a community, we need to do more, not just within the schools, but with religious communities, with faith communities. You know, we like to think that we're in a bit of a bubble, particularly with anti-Semitism because we're in a Jewish community. And yet.
We're not.
My kids have been the only Jewish kids in their class some years.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, many kids in this community don't go to the public school. So, it's, you know, it's a strange dynamic for us. But, but we're certainly not immune to racism, bigotry, anti-Semitism, all of that awful stuff. And it's horrific to turn on the news and see what's happening and to think that that's creeping into our community. So, to the extent that we can be proactive and form committees within the town with various, I guess, actors in the town, I'm happy to give whatever support I can so that we can really be a model because we're not the only district facing this. And unfortunately, it's just going to increase. And we know it's going to happen again. We know these are not isolated incidents. And we have to do everything we can to nip it in the bud and to work as a community to stop it from happening again and from showing that we're taking this seriously and we're not going to tolerate it in our communities. So, I hope that we can do that because.
I like that point in particular about making sure that the students know that we're taking it seriously. I mean, one, you know, one way to sort of make students feel safe is, you know, the school needs to communicate that it's not okay that they hear in the lunchroom, you know, anti-Semitic comments, that they hear racist comments in the lunchroom. The school takes that seriously and it's, you know, there's somebody looking out for them. I mean, I, you know, I have discussions with my children. Have you heard, you know, what happened in school today? You heard, you know, they tell me about weird stuff that they heard and it's hard for me to know what to tell them exactly. Well, that's not acceptable, you know, what that student said to you. It would be good for them, it would be good for our students to see us really reacting, not punitively, but, but, you know, dramatically or vehemently, to show them that we're working on the issue. I don't know.
I have something.
Would you sign in, please? Would you please sign in?
Did you sign in, sir?
I just wanted to say something.
There should be a pen there unless someone stole it.
Anna?
I wanted to, I wanted to say something very briefly in, so, in case the community doesn't know. The board has executive sessions before our 7:30 meetings. They start at 6:30. And for the last four years, and again, I was on the board many years ago, and we didn't have long executive sessions. And we didn't have executive sessions where all we talked about, for the most part, were discipline, harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports. And this board, in the four years I've been on it, has had those meetings every session. And we talk about discipline, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and we take it very, very, very seriously. And we had that meeting tonight where we discussed this exact set of matters. And we're trying to find a way to deal with something we haven't dealt with. And our superintendent is taking it and administration is taking it very seriously.
And that's where the idea came from, revamping this in-school suspension program. So, it's not just kids sitting there. It's, we're actually infusing that with programs that can
Right.
Help work with students who are, I mean, it's so hard, right? Because sometimes students express things that are very difficult, right? And it's our job to serve all of those students.
Yes.
And we have to find a way to work with those students to, if, to maintain them in our community. And if we can't maintain them in our community, to make sure they go somewhere where they're going to get the support that they need and require, not just to cast them out. So, we're, we're trying our best to, you know, keep all our students here, give them everything that they need. Oh, that's a great, to put that up, Scott. Thank you.
Oh, that's wonderful.
What Darcy's talking about is moving from what we have now, which I call partially support-based program for the kids who we do try to remediate, keep in, in this community, to a fully support-based program. And I proposing these components be part of that, wouldn't take a whole lot of additional, doesn't take a lot of money. It just takes planning and creativity and a, or moving around of some of our resources, providing these kids with more psychiatric counseling.
But part of what I'm hearing is that the communication piece is what's missing. And if you remember what we did last year after there was that large fight that was very concerning and we had heard concern from teachers, what we did was we put together that forum because we had a very specific response. And, you know, we made, the board made a very conscious effort that our response to that wasn't going to be to have armed guards or, you know, increased security. It was going to be to increase our support for those students and how we were going to do that. And that, at that point, came in the form of an additional vice principal, so that each building had its own vice principal. And Mr. Harrison, whose position I can never remember that came up.
Youth Safety Specialist.
Thank you. I don't know why I have such a mental block with that. But, you know, that we have a supportive nurturing, yet somewhat intimidating presence in the hallways to let students know that that kind of behavior wasn't going to be acceptable. It sounds like we may need something on a similar scale for this to say, our response is still going to attempt to be therapeutic and supportive, but these are the things that we are going to put into place to make sure when these instances come up. And, you know, I have to say, so far with what we've done in the high school, it seems to be working. You know, we, we haven't had any large-scale fights. I haven't even really heard about any small-scale. So, you know, we, we seem to have done something that's moved us in the right direction there. Are you going to tell me something opposite, Avery? No.
Wait a minute.
No, I, yeah, I definitely agree, although I haven't really been in the school district for too long. But I would suggest that in the future, policy approaches attempt to kind of involve student groups, especially, I think, in terms of the LGBTQ specific kind of addressing those issues. I think we do have another group for African-American students as well. I think we do have another group for African-American students as well. But I think that can kind of be like the, you know, bureaucratic function of getting these policies to be more effectively implemented, because in reality, these are the students that are in the club, that they actually go into classrooms with the rest of the student body. So I feel it would be most effective to get the opinions and also use these groups as a way of implementing policy within the schools, because that also allows for queer students to have input into this process and advise us on how best to take action against this hate speech or bias, because in reality, they're probably going to be the best sort of people to know what to do, in combination with, you know, research and your policy perspectives as well.
But this forum that we put together, I think we called it a safety forum, involved quite a few students. We had a great student turnout. So I think that is something which we should do, and we could do it before the end of the school year, so we would have time to make whatever.
I know that we kind of discussed it last time we met, is the TGNC policy kind of check-in? That's the, the small group of parents and professionals that we have for the TGNC policy. But, you know, specific to that policy, perhaps that could be an area in which we could invite some students from different grade levels to give us input. And I do know that sometimes when we work on policy, there are maybe some assumptions that we make as adults that, you know, students know, that we are here to listen to them, that we are going to be responsive. And, you know, I think those are assumptions that we make, because we are all on the same page as a board and the administration, like, we're all doing our best, and so, you know, we appreciate the best in others. But I don't know if the students who need us to tell them that directly are getting that message. So that's what I'm hearing. Like, in the conversation as a whole, I feel like that's something that we should absolutely put some more energy behind, doing better for those particular students. And of course, you can't single out, you know, some kid in the corner and say, "Hey, you know, I see you over there looking sad." That's not the way to do it. I think, though, that there is a way to do it, to send the message that, you know, we are, we are ready to be responsive. And we are. Like, we are absolutely willing to listen and to be responsive. So I just want to say, you know, that as a, as a grown-up in the community, that I do get a sense that the kids are a little bit, what's the word? Not complacent, but kind of just, you know, a little bit, maybe not hopeful that they're being heard.
So, Scott, can you put some folks together to, see, making little tasks for yourself? Okay.
I'm doing it as we speak.
All righty. I'm glad you're good at that, because I'm not. All right, so if there isn't any additional public comment, we are going to move on and thank everybody for coming out and for your comments and for keeping us abreast of the pulse of our community and what's going on. So, Michelle, we skipped you and then went to public comments. We're going to come back to you, although you have nothing new on your agenda and you guys haven't met. So I'm assuming it's really kind of perfunctory to-
No, so, yeah, I mean, I don't know what to talk about.
Okay, if you have nothing to talk about, you've got nothing to talk about.
I mean, I have plenty to talk about, but nothing you'd want to hear about. So, yeah, I mean, the field trip request, I was just looking through them. I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through them, but there was one question I actually had about the field trips. The Zimmerley Art Museum, it says that that's for the high school students, and it's Ms. Grunstein, Ms. Fantry, and Ms. Schmon. And there's 34 students going and they're walking. Everything about that I love. I just don't know what grade levels we're talking about or what classes we're referring to. I'm assuming this is an art class. I don't know which art class. I just wanted to know, I'm just very curious.
I'll find out.
Okay.
I'll pull it up there and do some texting.
Absolutely great. Thank you so much.
Okay, so if we don't have anything else for curriculum and instruction, we will actually start with our action items. So, Michelle, we'll go right back to you, and you can move those items.
Okay, I just wanted to mention one more thing, just so you know.
Sorry, did you already have an answer?
I'm sorry, I looked at the teachers' names. It's high school.
It's high school.
Yeah, she said high school.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure what grade levels or what classes.
Oh, I'll find out specifically, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably the community art class, but I'll find out.
Like, what are they wearing? No, I don't need all those specifics, but, you know.
What are the snacks?
Yeah, what are they eating for snacks? No, I just wanted to remind everyone that the curriculum committee is meeting this Wednesday at 3:00, in case any of you wanted to show up, because you're looking for something to do at 3:00 on Wednesday. That's for board members, not community members. Please don't show up at 3:00 PM on Wednesday. Anyways, I would like to move items number one through, oh, gosh, I'm not looking at the right page. I'm sorry, one through three.
All righty, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mark, could you move the finance facilities items for us, please?
Yes, I'm going to move items one through five. We're tabling six through nine, and I'll be moving with that items 10 through 28.
All righty, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Boy, your voice sounds a little different on each yes, Rob, so interesting. Personnel, Ann, could you move those items for us, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through 27, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have no discussion. I just want to point out that we've had a number of retirements this year.
Yeah.
And that I know at the end of the year, when we have a meeting and we acknowledge all our people, I just want to make sure that's on our radar, because we have a lot of people we want to say thank you to as they-
It is.
...as they retire and leave us and go put their feet up, hopefully, on a lounge chair for a while.
We just received another retirement today, who will be announced May 3rd, next, I'm sorry, May 6th, next week. So we're going to not be recognizing as many students as we usually do in June. The athletic department confirmed that it has its own recognition dinner.
Oh.
So we thought it'd be best if we just focus on academic recognition and the retirees. So I think it'll all work out nicely this year.
Perfect. Oh, great, okay. Yeah, because there's, this is the biggest chunk of retirements I think we've had in quite a while.
It seems like, yeah.
It's all the more important to have everyone get together and give them a nice send-off, so.
Can we, can we wear gowns and tuxedos and things?
Ooh, that'd be fun.
Fancy style?
Okay.
Prom.
So if there isn't any other discussion, Linda, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, and, Mark, policies?
Yeah, I'd like to move item one.
That was easy. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Linda, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
No.
Okay, so next we have our board liaison reports. Do we have anything from our-
No, not yet. The municipalides hasn't met yet since.
Okay. Mark?
Nothing, no.
You got the quiet, you got the quiet-
Very quiet.
Quiet ones this time. Rob, I know you've got stuff for us from the Ed Foundation.
Well, actually, I did not attend last week's meeting, but the, I think we're aware of the upcoming gala casino night, which is on May 11th.
Eleven, yeah.
Right.
Gone, sadly.
Yeah, so everybody get out there, get your tickets, and have a good time.
Excellent. Oh, and do I need to make another graphic for you, or did you?
Uh, no, we're all set.
We're all set? Oh, okay.
Yes.
All righty. And you have money from everybody?
Not yet.
No.
All right, well, there's everyone, get out your checkbooks, folks. The board puts a, an ad in there.
Yeah, I try not to be too tough on that, but, yeah. Anytime, guys.
Look, I said it, and money's flying around the board table now. Okay, Ann, do you have anything for us from the commission for universal access?
Uh, no, I don't. Meetings have been at, traditionally, on Mondays, so I've been not able to go. They've been coincidental with our board meetings, but I understand that that is going to change for the new semester.
All righty, that'll be good. Public libraries, no library, no library meeting? Okay.
Can I say something about the library, or no? We want to go through these.
Uh, what do you have to say?
Oh, what I have to say is, I saw at the library recently, there's a sign on the door, pretty stern sign, warning students that they have only two hours on the computer and that don't stand, I mean, I actually thought it was less than that, so two hours sounded better than I thought. Students are not to stand over one another's shoulders, looking over shoulders at the computer. Anything students do that, I'm sorry, I'm not phrasing this very well, that the library, librarians have the discretion to eject students from the library, you know, for any inappropriate behavior, you know, at their discretion. It was very stern, and it made me wonder if perhaps the discipline issues at the library are getting ramped up again, or at least the perception on the part of librarians, that people are misbehaving, and the perception on part of students that they are or perhaps are not misbehaving. Oh, yeah, here we go. It's, "One person per computer, do not stand next to, behind, or near anyone else. We reserve the right to remove you from the building for any behavior we decide is inappropriate." Now, of course, those things have always been true, you know, the latter, anyway.
Do you ever sit down and meet? It sounds like it would be good for you to sit down and meet with the library director.
Yeah, I actually have a, I'm actually meeting with the board in, coming up, actually, it's the next board meeting, so I'm, I'll be there in front of the entire library board.
I mean, we seem to have an ongoing issue with students that come over, especially from the middle school, right after school. I'm sure sometimes they are really rowdy, I think other times they talk. And I think the talking, I'm sure the librarians understandably, you know, are looking for quiet, but hopefully, they also view themselves as working in partnership with the district. And students who don't have computers go to the library, sometimes they work on projects together and someone has to stand and look over someone else's shoulder. And I hope that in an effort to achieve quiet, we don't sort of lose the sense of us being partners. And I, this has been going on for a long time, so I just hope that, I'd like that to be a priority for us in working with librarians.
So, May 20th, I just confirmed, I'm meeting with them May 20th. Perhaps we can collaborate on a plan. I, you know, I don't know if they have any input. And I could also work with, perhaps, Sean Harrison, our youth safety specialist. Maybe he, he's actually around that decidity. He hangs out by the driveway entranceway to the high school. At around 3:00, which is when a lot of the kids are there, maybe he can also assist in some way.
That might be nice. I, I think the problem probably goes both ways. It's not just that the students are being unduly rowdy. I mean, there have been times when I've been in the library, and my perception was that they were acting like normal students, talking, just as adults often talk in the library, even though perhaps you shouldn't talk in the library. And perhaps, there may be an inclination on the part of some librarians to feel with students like they need to keep a tighter lid on it, because, of course, they're kids that can get out of control more easily. What I'm trying to say is it's not just a question of the students calming down and having the stern presence of Mr. Harrison there to keep them calm. It's also an issue of the library, the library perhaps, I'm wondering if there's any way the library can be a little more flexible in welcoming of our students, at least for a couple hours after school.
Yeah.
You know, the adults, we have the library the rest of the day.
I'll fill things out on May 20th.
Okay.
So, Scott, I just wanted to mention that I'm next door neighbors to a library board member, and this came up in conversation. So what I heard was that they're losing a staff member or two? I'm not quite sure.
Just one.
Just one, okay.
As if that's good, it's only one.
Right, so it's not, not good, but that, the, the problems are not centered around, from what I understand, not centered around noise. But it could be that noise is a problem. But anyway, I think that there is room for some kind of partnership where the librarians don't have classroom management skills, because that's not what they do in library science.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's a certain grade level of students that we're dealing with, but I'm hopeful that things can, you know, be worked on. It sounds to me like this list was meant to address specific problems, but rather than dealing with specific problems, they made the solutions as broad as possible.
Is that something you want me to see?
Well, sure, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a public sign. I could send my phone down with it, if you don't mind, but, you know, it's, yeah, I could text it to you.
But maybe could you reach out to them before the 20th? Because that's, you know, we're practically to the end of the school year at that point. It sounds like it might, you know.
Sure, yeah, let me, I'd like to see that.
I mean, it might be a question of actually asking them to change their mentality for a couple hours, to have like sort of a, you know, middle school hour, at least for the first hour and a half, where kids could come and they could talk in normal voices, just as adults do. I mean, I have, I've heard about incidents where kids were talking no louder than, you know, adults typically talk in the library or on their cellphones at the library, and there's been more of a reaction. So maybe, maybe we could actually ask them to do us the favor of being a little more flexible, particularly during specific time periods.
Well, good luck.
No, I know.
That conversation has been going on for a long time, including Captain Curbelo.
Yeah.
Captain Curbelo.
Captain Curbelo.
Has been having that conversation with them for a very long time now. Please, like, have a little bit more patience, have a little bit more understanding. Don't call us because one of the kids is talking too loudly and-
Are you kidding me?
Oh, constant.
Seriously?
Calling the police?
Yes, constant.
All right, so Scott, that, yeah, and Darcy, I think we really need to emphasize that, that can't be happening.
No.
That's part of our plan for people to have Wi-Fi, is to go to the library.
It's doing damage to the relationships we're trying to foster.
But, but to sympathize with the library is, to a certain extent, they're under tremendous amounts of stress right now, as their budgets have been cut.
This is a problem for years, though.
And it's a problem in town. I mean, it's a town-wide school, library, council of, of, of a money issue, of not having enough people there.
I totally understand.
It's a terrible situation.
Of course there is, of course.
Absolutely. I've seen it. I've seen kids being extremely disrespectful to the librarians, and that's not okay. It's not appropriate.
And I've also seen the librarians make really strong friendships with the kids who really need, you know, guidance or whatever, but I guess what I'm saying is, I totally understand, I mean, I used to be an employee there, but I would hope that, you know, the teachers, the staff, the administration would be the people that they would reach out to, rather than the police department.
And Scott did meet with Jane, you met with her a year ago, Scott, I believe?
I did, yeah.
To discuss this. To discuss this, and if you're going to see the board, she'll be there, other people will be there, and I think they'll be sympa, I, I expect they will be sympathetic to our, our position.
And I did receive the screenshot or the picture that you took, thanks.
Sure.
I have a very close neighbor who lives in my house, it's on the library board.
All right, um, thanks for that, Ann. So I have nothing, as always, from shared services. Ruth, I'm assuming, nothing's changed with CPAC?
Nothing.
We did talk about you...
Yeah, what did you last week?
The idea about connecting you with the PTOs.
Oh, right, yeah.
So maybe let's work on that.
Remember that.
Let's work on that. You and I will work on that. We did have a meeting with the, the Irving PTO folks, there's a budget meeting, and they were very sweet, but there's just two of them, and they're trying to, you know...
Oh, sweeties.
Yeah, oh, no, so bad, like, you know, running, running book fairs, like by themselves, just the two of them, and...
Two people?
Two people.
Two people showed up.
Two people.
It used to be a lot more than that, and it was a lot.
Either people in town have a lot of confidence in us on the, on the budget, or else they're, they're getting the tar and the feathers ready, we just don't know.
No, but I just mean, no, but I just mean that they, there's only two people, like, holding up the entire Irving PTO, so, you know?
That's what they said.
All right. Where are we? Monique's not here to tell us about Post-Soc and anything in human relations?
No, our meeting was canceled so that members could attend the session, the council session, the public session about the police, new police chief.
Gotcha.
I don't know if anybody here went, I did not.
I did not, I was not available that night. Okay, Michelle, you got anything from the Board of Health?
So, the Board of Health is, as we said last time, looking for liaisons from the current 7th grade, so the rising 8th graders, because they would like some representation from the middle school. I think that they've gotten a list of possible representation for the high school from the teen center. Ms. Osmoah was very graciously adding some names to a list that she thought would be great resources from the high school, but we're still looking for some kids who could have dedicated time to spend once a month at the Board of Health, who would be in the 8th grade next year. So, anyone, know anyone, let the Board of Health know. And of course, you have to be willing to show up, that's the most important thing. So, what else did we talk about? We talked about the upcoming Earth Day that just passed.
And didn't happen?
Didn't really happen, yeah. I'm not really sure.
Crummy weather.
Yeah. I'm not really sure if that's going to be rescheduled or anything, but I doubt it.
I don't think so, I think it was just canceled.
Yeah. We also talked about the Teen Pep Program, so we're super happy to donate, you know, what they could, resources and other things. They said, "We have got to make sure that the T-shirts happen again." They were fantastic, so they're setting aside resources for the T-shirts again. And they're gonna have to do a pretty good job next year, because these T-shirts this year were outstanding. Also, I wanted to make a correction, I said that Rite Aid, being a big corporate place, is taking drugs, used prescriptions back, so they have a take-back program. That's actually not true. The Board of Health is trying to get them to participate, but it does require some financial investment on their part, which they're not willing to do. Safe Drugs, on the other hand, as tiny and small as Safe Drugs is, is working on it with some, some seriousness. So, there's more to come with that, but yeah, they're trying to get Rite Aid to kind of cough that up. Yeah. So, also, we talked about the, the deer. The deer infestation, which people think, right? But yeah, well, quick, quick, quick. They did discuss the fact that, not many people know, but deer ticks make contact with humans because of mice, and their, you know, close vicinity with human habitations, not so much the deer. So, they're discussing these things called, these things called tick tubes, which is, long story short, a way to spread a chemical on the mice so that the deer ticks do not stick to the mice. Right? So, they're...
Is that because the mice are dead, or?
No, it's because the mice, the mice then have this sheen on them, and the ticks will not go anywhere near it. And it lasts on the mice for a long, long time. So they're trying to get the word out about those, but they haven't quite decided exactly how to do that, but the idea that it's the deer that are making people sick is something that they're trying to, you know...
Stop blaming the deer.
Stop blaming the deer. I mean, blame them for the tulips, but there's nothing we can do, but mice are the problem. So, we're gonna, we're gonna talk more about the mice in...
Fascinating.
In months to come. And of course, we always discuss delayed opening times, always, and there's a whole lot of research behind it, as we all know. Not much we can do to make it any later than we already have it, and as we talked about in the Teen Pep thing, like, kids are still required in many instances to get there earlier than that delayed time. So, I mean, it's gonna be the same type of battle that we face with the, the time change, right? To get that changed, so that we don't have the antiquated agricultural time change. That's, it just doesn't seem like there's anything much we can do, but we continue to talk about it. And then the last item, I think, is community outreach for the street fair, and there is something called the J-O-N-J Health Fair, that's going to be a part of that. So, it's the Jamaican, oh gosh, no, I forgot what it was. I think it's Jamaican Outreach New Jersey Health Fair. So they're offering to partner up with the Board of Health and provide the community with some basic health screening at the street fair.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so that's really great, and I made a point of asking them to please involve the Pride Center, or other places like IPG, that would be able to offer some LGBT-friendly health screening, because there is, yeah, there's quite a lot of emotional stuff involved in seeking out health care as a person from the LGBT plus community.
And as a kid, in particular.
Especially, yeah. I mean, I know, as a parent, it was quite a lot of research I had to do, and many mistakes were made along the way, trying to get the right type of health care. So, anyway, that's about it.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Sure.
Mr. Ross Levitch, you have anything for us from the Green Team?
I have to catch up on the Green Team.
Ouch, okay. Do it later.
I'm trying to have it for next week.
Don't breathe over here much. Mark, I'm assuming same goes for you?
Same.
And New Jersey School Board's Delegate Assembly, that's on the 18th, but I've been checking their website, there's nothing up for resolution, so I don't know what the heck it is we're gonna be doing. So, no big announcements that Sweeney's gonna be there, so, I don't know. I may, to be honest with all of you, if, I may call them between now and the 18th, and if there really are no resolutions, I'm probably not gonna go, because it's a big, it's a big trek and a big chunk out of my day if we're not doing anything productive, so.
Why is that the case, do you think?
If people aren't, if districts aren't submitting resolutions, there's, or if they submit resolutions and the resolution subcommittee doesn't move any of them forward, then there's no resolutions, and there's nothing to vote on.
If you do go, it might be nice to find out. I don't know if there's any way you could get information about that, but I would love to know why people are not submitting things, or why they are not, the subcommittee might not be accepting them.
Hi, Abby.
Goodnight, Abby.
There are 600-plus districts in the state, and less than 150 show up to this meeting.
Wow.
So, it's not, you know...
That's unfortunate.
It's not terribly well-attended or functional.
You can't have you submit something for every single meeting.
Yeah, exactly. I know, as much as we try.
We do.
So I don't have anything there, Ann?
The spring meeting is on Wednesday.
Okay.
I don't know any information about programming, they don't have anything on the website about it, other than it being the spring meeting, and I hope to attend.
You do?
I do, I think I would be better by then.
Have fun. Okay, so that brings us to my report, and if I can borrow your mic, I may actually get off my butt and go walk over there. Wait, the big buttons, that one, not that one, not that one, that's gonna turn it off. Okay. All right, I don't usually get up and walk around, I feel kinda weird doing this, but here I go. So I just, I don't want to take too much time, because now it's 9:30 at night. Hi, I know, right? I'm up and moving around. But then John doesn't have to, like, you know, go between me over there and the thing over here, and, now, see, and then I'll just stand behind a pole anyway, so John can't see me. So I just wanted to spend a little bit of time, some of you guys have seen some of this information, but I wanted to condense it all into one presentation to really give the community a sense of what it is that the district is up against this year. And we've definitely, at the board table, been talking about it over the last couple of years, you know, something that's hard to kind of send home a Honeywell about, like, hey, we're about to hit a financial cliff, everybody. You know, it's something that's hard to communicate, but at the board table, we've certainly been trying to communicate this over the last couple of years, that, you know, we knew we were coming to this point, where it was not going to be feasible or even possible to continue to tax our residents. It was unlikely we were gonna get more money from the state, and we were gonna have needs that continued to increase. So, what I put together in this slideshow is information from two sources, both from the Education Law Center, and I'll have Dr. Taylor put this up on the new fancy-fangled website, and I do, you know, you'll notice underneath the little chart there that I do have links to where the data comes from. It comes from the Education Law Center's school funding database. They've done an unbelievable job of documenting for the last 10 years, all of the vacillations in state funding that have gone on since just prior to the Christie administration and since the Christie administration. So what this particular chart represents is our increased enrollment, and that's an important piece to pay attention to in terms of the budget situation that we find ourselves in. 10 years ago, we had a little under 1,500 students, now, or late, last year, we had a little under, a little over 1,600 students, now we have about 1,640. So, we're seeing that slow creep up. We're not at the point where it's panic mode and we need to start looking at additional facilities, but it is at the point where we're serving more students. And I also wanted to point out the weighted enrollment. I think that's something really important that the Education Law Center shows in this chart, and underneath, you know, I'm not gonna stand here and read it to you, but it, it explains what weighted enrollment is. And basically, weighted enrollment means that for a district like ours that has about a 40% free and reduced lunch rate, there is an additional weight that's added on to each student in what's called the School Funding Reform Act, that's added to each student that's considered at risk. So our students who are free and reduced lunch are considered at risk. So that weighted enrollment shows that at-risk population, and it's, and it not, and acknowledgement that at least our state has made on a legislative level, that it takes more resources to serve students who are at risk. Unfortunately, the state is not then funding that recognition that they have, that those students are more expensive to, more expensive to educate. So, we, as of 2008, 2009, our weighted enrollment was a little under 1,800, and now 2018, 2019, over 2,000. So that gives you a real picture of the difference in the population that we're serving over the last decade. And then this is just the more concrete numbers, that 7% increase from 2008, 2009 to 2018, 2019, and I believe now we're hovering closer to the, the 40% mark, which has enabled Gen Knapp, bless her, to, she's been really diligent about completing the paperwork every year to try to get us to be an entire Title I district, which means that those Title I funds that we receive can be allocated more across the board, not just targeted towards certain students. And clearly, we will make sure that those initiatives are still geared towards those students, but it helps us broaden our reach a little bit. And this is the real, real doozy, that's really kind of the heart of the matter, which shows the last 10 years of state funding, both the required state aid and the actual state aid. So, on the most basic level, you can see that in 2009, we should have gotten a little under $5 million from the state, and in 2019, we should have gotten close to $6 million from the state. Instead, we got a little under $4 million from the state, and that 2019 number of what we actually got from the state is less than what we got from the state in 2009, which is just kind of staggering. So you put those two things together, you put together less funding than we got 10 years ago, and the increased at-risk population that we're serving, and you get the budget squeeze that we're in, because our students have more needs, and there's more of them, and we have less money.
And there's inflation.
Right, exactly, exactly. You also have the 10 years' worth of inflation to go along with that.
Mark, your microphone.
Darcy, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, no, 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 go ahead.
I see on the required state aid line...
Yep.
2013 to present, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of fluctuation, 5.7...
In the required?
On the required side, 5.7, 4.8, 5.4, 6.5, 7.3 last year, and then down a little, a million six, what is that?
That's the S2 legislation. I think it's the changes in the legislation that the legislature adopted late last, late last year, I think. So it changed the amount of money that was allocated to districts. So, I mean, yes, it would have been less than we would have gotten, but it still would have been a hell of a lot more than we got, you know, like...
So, when the S2 changed with the new administration, that allows the new administration to say that they have increased the state aid.
Correct. But they moved it around.
But no one is really increasing the state aid in practical terms.
And there's many districts around the state that lost tremendous amount of aid, and now some of those districts are banding together, and they've been rallying at the State House, and, yeah, it's, it's a mess. It's, it's an absolute hot mess.
So this is, this is basically a really weak talking point.
Yes. It's along the lines of Christie's 2% cap talking point, right? Everybody was like, 2% cap, 2% cap, you can't let raise taxes more than 2% cap. And then it was a couple of years later that I was like, oh, but then there's banked cap, and oh, then there's waivers for this, that, and the other. And what Christie really did was just shift the burden away from the state and onto local taxpayers.
But now...
With a, with a really solid talking point of where holding budgets do a 2% cap.
But this is kind of just, you know, pulling a rabbit out of a hat.
Kind of.
Kind of magic trick, where it's like, oh, it's all back.
Overall, there's more money, and some districts got more money, and we're getting slightly more money, but we're not getting nearly what we're owed, and we're still underwater from 10 years ago.
But the talking point, I think, is important to call it out for what it is.
And that's, that's why I feel the need to do this.
Beautiful, thank you.
To make it very clear, to show that that talking point doesn't hold water, and that's why we went and met with Senator Deignan. So, yes, the talking point, and we got a, you know, I got an email from one of our state legislators saying, you know, we're there fighting for you in Trenton, we're getting you more money, and, well, nope, no you're not.
Yeah, that's, that's very important, I think, because for voters, that's what they see. This is critically important information.
Yeah.
So thank you so much for putting this together.
Yeah. We can't, I mean, we can sit here and say there's no money, but we need to demonstrate it to folks. Like, we're not just saying there's no money. There's really no money. Like, we're constantly, every year, being asked to do more with less for kids with greater needs. So it's just, it's a diabolical combination. So I put together some of the biggest struggles that we face. One, obviously, is the health benefits cost. We talk about this every year, this isn't a great big surprise, but it was kind of helpful for me to see it laid out in actual numbers, to see the actual number increases and the percentage increases, to see exactly what it is, what we're talking about. And, you know, and this impacts our, our staff as well. Their contributions are increasing as well, so their take-home pay has decreased. This is not, this is a bad slide for everybody, you know? I could also, you know, I probably could have, like, gone to a couple of teachers and been like, okay, let's look at what your contributions have, how they've increased over the last few years, because, you know, we may be paying them more, but they're taking home less. So, this is not like, oh, well, those teachers now, they're getting these, you know, they're paying a lot out of pocket for them, and it's really impacting their take-home pay. So, this is just distressing on a number, number of levels. And this information came from Linda. So, where the information came from, Linda, I just indicated that the sources are School Business Administrator. And then this one is the special education cost. Again, this is something that we talk about all the time, but I thought it was important to just put the, the raw numbers out there and the percentage increases, just to really get a sense of what it is. And something I want to make just abundantly clear, because we do talk about this all the time, and this, the intention of this is not to put a target on any students, or to separate out any students, or to say, we want to somehow get out from underneath providing these services. That's absolutely not what it's about. But we do have to take a very realistic look of what it means to say that a district is held to a 2% cap, yet our total special education costs in a year go up almost 30%. How do you sustain that? How do you sustain that? So that's one of the things that I tried to speak to Senator Deignan about, was any ways that the legislature can help us here. And Mark, you know, I love having Mark's historical knowledge here of having seen how much more money we got back from the state years ago versus what we get now. And that's why part of the, my title for this presentation is it being about the disinvestment in public education. This is absolutely what, how it's happening, and it's happening in these teeny, tiny little places, here, there, and everywhere, where you, you may not even see the bill that impacts it, or you might not see the tweak to the funding formula that impacts it, but all those things are accumulating to put districts like ours in this squeeze, in this pinch, where, you know, we're fighting each other for these resources. Special Ed parents feel like they're fighting parents from, you know, that's not the way it should be. We want to be able to serve all of our students, and we want to be able to serve them all well, but we're getting to the point where we can't do that. So as much as we would want to keep every program that we have and offer more, there simply isn't, there simply aren't the funds, they're just not there. And then I wanted to give an explanation, because we talk about this sometimes, about extraordinary aid, and what we should be getting back from the state, but what we actually are getting back from the state. And, and this is where, part of what I talked about, talked to Senator Deignan about, was this phenomenon that we've talked about multiple times at the board table as well, of these unilateral placements. Part of why these unilateral, unilateral placements are so diabolical in terms of our budget is not only when they happen, which is typically... only when they happen, which is typically at the very beginning of the school year. We've all sat at this table, we figured out our budget, we've decided where we on our money, all our money to go. And then in September, we get hit with two or three unilateral, unilateral, oh, unilateral placements and accompanying lawsuits. And then all of a sudden, we have to figure out where another couple hundred thousand dollars is going to come from to serve those placements. Now, when we have those extraordinary needs of students going out of district, we're supposed to be getting a certain percentage of that back from the state, and this explains what that is. But the really particularly bad part for us is the threshold is higher if it's a private placement. And I think every single one of these unilateral placements has been to a private placement. So anything up to $60,000 is the district responsibility. So we get, anything up to $60,000, we get zero help from the state, zero. That threshold is lower for public placements. So if we're, if, if it's our student, we can look for, and hopefully work with the parents to look for a public placement that's going to be less costly, and if it is more costly, where we can get more reimbursement from the state. With these unilateral, good grief, unilateral placements, we typically don't, we have no control over that. The student's already there, it's a private placement, we're going to pay the whole thing. So there's a formula for how much then we're supposed to get back from the state, over that $45,000 or over that $60,000, but we're not even getting that. We're getting a fraction of that. So that's what, that's what these numbers are. The top one is how much we've applied for each year. The bottom one is how much we've received, and then the last one is just showing the percentage that we've received. So in 2017, 2018, we applied for $587,264. We got $295,481. That's 50% of what we were owed. And you can see, almost every year without fail, the percentage goes down. So five years ago, we were getting back 65% of what we were owed, now we're down to getting half of what we're owed. So we can, every year, I'm like, and now Linda, I'll shut up. Like, I've proved it to myself. Every year, I'm like, come on, we can say we're going to get a little bit more, we can, this is, it's not, it's going down. The number is going down. So Linda is rightly very cautious every year, estimating how much money we can put into the budget for extraordinary aid, because we don't get those numbers till, when do we get them? We get them at some, like, weird point that's not helpful in our budget. So it's hard to plan for them, we don't know how much we're going to be getting. And this year, the state made another one of those great announcements, they're going to put more money into extraordinary aid. And then I called to find out how much it was, I think it's like $5 million for the entire state. It's like, that's how much? What? That's not helpful?
Well, it's more, they could say more.
Exactly, but then, right, I got, I got sucked into the talking point, $5 million for the entire state. Womp, womp. So this little explanation and the explanation in the slide earlier, you see, I'll have a little, there's a little Seymour here at the bottom. Those explanations actually come from the New Jersey School Boards Association. They actually have a very helpful little primer on their website for some of these school funding things. Because I have to say, as much time as I spend trying to understand it, there are still pieces of the School Funding Reform Act that I don't think I will ever in my lifetime understand. I try really hard, but it's really complicated. But they do have a very good explainer on there, so that's helpful. And then I just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so sorry, I thought that was...
No, 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 go ahead.
Did you send that presentation to us? Do we have this somewhere?
I did not, but I will, I will after this, and I'll make sure.
I'd like to check the links.
Put it up on the website, yeah.
Thank you.
And then I just kind of had to put this one on here. This one's not terribly dramatic in terms of the increases, although, you know, you can certainly see that from 2013, 14 to 2019, 20, we're paying more. There's been a lot of up and down over the last few years. The jump that we saw this year, we've talked about this a couple of times this year, you know, we got a lick, little cheer, yay, we got an extra $180,000 from the state, you know, like, wow, that's going to help. And then it was like, maybe a week later that we got the news, oh, but you're going to pay another $50,000 in charter school expenses. So whoop, there, we dropped right down to $130-something thousand dollars from the state. And then we found out we were getting less in pre-K aid. Again, talking point, more pre-K aid for the state, Highland Park, less pre-K aid. How that, how those numbers shook out, never understand that. But at that point, we were down to like a $100,000 increase from the state. So I just can't ever help but point out, you put that $400,000 back in our budget, all these things that we're talking about are moot. French moot, well, French is not really moot, because, well, but then maybe we could afford to do three programs, but that would still probably be tricky. Home ec, we don't have to worry about it, talking about potentially, we don't have to worry about any of it. It solves our budget problems right there. And the recommendation that I made to Senator Deignan was actually based on something that's in the charter school law, and it's why we saw this big jump this year. We didn't actually see more students going to charter schools, it was just that a vast majority of the students from our district who go to charter schools leave private schools to go to the charter school. They don't leave our public schools, they leave private schools. So the first year that a student leaves a private school and goes to a charter school, the state picks up that tuition. So what I'm asking the senator to look into is if we have these unilateral placements and students are leaving a private school and going straight into an out-of-district placement, the state should similarly pick up those costs, at least for the first year. That in the last few years, if we hadn't had to spend those $200, $300,000 on uterinal...
You got it.
Can someone else say it for me?
Unilateral.
Someone else say it.
Unilateral.
Thank you. Placements. That would have helped our budget tremendously every year, because we would have that additional money to roll over potentially into the next year. Everything wouldn't have to be such a squeeze. And his ears actually perked up at that recommendation, so that was kind of exciting. So I thought it was important to include this also for that reason. This wasn't an increase in the number of students, this was just last year, the state picked up two of those students, this year the state's not picking up those students, now we are, so now we're at $400,000. And I'd really like that $400,000 back. So that's it. If anybody has any questions or whatever, I will go back to my seat.
That was a fantastic presentation.
That was amazing.
I'd like to put it on the front page of the website. I'll make it a news item so the community can download it.
I thought you were going to say, "Front page of the New York Times."
It should be on the front page.
It should be. But it's a lot more information than I've ever gotten.
I stole your mic. I'm just really impressed, that was good stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody, I know we want to get out of here, but does anybody have any questions?
There was one slide, it was healthcare costs that I wanted to ask about.
Okay. Whoop. Scott just made it go away, though.
I'll put it back up.
It's there somewhere, I know it wasn't, I know it's late, I'm not seeing things yet, but...
I was actually on my way to uploading it to the website.
Oh, cool.
How excited I got.
Well, I could just ask without having it posted up there. I, I know that that's a really big sticking point, and I had heard in conversations around town, the idea that if teachers had a different type of healthcare plan, that it would be cheaper, and so it would be less money for us to put in, and potentially less money for them to put in. But the idea was to give them a 401K. So pretty much, the idea that I've heard floated around national politics of a savings account for your healthcare, you know, so it's not really solving any problems, it's not providing, you know, the, the human need for health services.
The only one that I've heard talked about in the state is the one that Mark has referred to, which is Sweeney's plan of the difference in the, the cost between the state health benefits plan and the school employees' health benefits plan. And there is a radical difference between the cost of the two plans, but I don't know what the difference is in the coverage. So that's something that we would have to explore. And I know that Sweeney's plan is not being met with much fanfare anywhere. I don't think anybody's terribly, I, I don't know, I just, I don't know the details yet, so I need to, I need to look into it further.
Sure.
The claims, the claims in the news are that the state health benefits plan and the school employees' benefits plan have comparable levels of health benefits, but the school employees' health benefit plan is 40 or 50%, no, 30 to 40% higher in cost, so that we're paying $36,000 for the family coverage on average, and the state health benefits plan to other employees, not, not the school employees, is, for that same plan is $24,000. So it's a third less. There may be differences, I don't know. And we have contractual obligations, so we have to cover our employees at a certain level. But Sweeney has explored combining the plans, getting something, I guess, that would be somewhere in the middle. That would save us, I mean, our costs are over $6 million. That would cost us, that would save us a fortune. But I, I'm not so hopeful that that's happening anytime soon.
Well, I mean, I'm grateful for Sweeney's suggestion, I guess, but is there any, yes, I was being sarcastic. But is there any idea of how much he advocates for a single payer plan on the national level?
I don't think he's heard those words before, so I doubt, I doubt that that's on his mind. I think his mind, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make light of it, I guess I was, but not now. He, he, sorry.
It's good.
He, he's trying to solve a problem, and I give him credit for trying to solve that problem, because we do have a problem. I think the problem is caused by the, the school employees retirees being in the school employees' health benefits plan, which raises the price significantly, the, the coverage costs significantly. I don't know what his solution is, I don't know, you know, what his real solution is, and I don't know what the numbers on, I only know what I've read. And I think it's pretty accurate, the numbers are pretty accurate from what I can see. But if he can put something together, pass legislature, get it signed, and we would even save 10%, 15, 15% even is out of the question, but 10%, we would, we would literally say, I mean, 10% is $600,000, and our teachers would save that same 10% in their contributions. So there's a hope that could happen. But I don't think, I think the teachers, as they should be, are very wary that benefits will be taken away.
Sure.
But I don't think he, he's thinking of single payer, he's thinking of trying to solve a problem.
Yeah.
It's a real problem.
Yeah, I know, I, I appreciate that there's a...
It's beyond his ability to, to even think about a single payer.
I just know that, reading as much as I do about this topic, that the majority of Americans, across party lines, independents as well, are in favor of a single payer plan. Yet, when it comes to the real, like, conversation about these things on the local level, it seems to be like an impossible thing to discuss, and we can't expect our senators to, to say those words. I mean, there's not a person that you can talk to that would disagree with you, because that, that takes so much money out of our system, and it really does cost more than a single payer system. So I don't know why, you know, we are not pushing for our leaders to advocate for that. I think we should, I don't know what more we can do, but I don't know. It's very difficult, but it's...
I think, I think we have a more pressing, urgent, short-term need.
Oh, sure.
Which is to see if we can, and, you know, we solved some of this here through negotiations, so that in some number of years, in our contract with the different associations, the, the employees won't, new employees won't get the most expensive coverage. And that'll save the district, 10 years from now, when, you know, nobody remembers me, they'll say, thank good, no, no, truthfully, so they'll, they will say, wow, the, this, we're not paying the numbers we paid, because new people didn't, didn't go on the most expensive plan. But that's still, it's only chipping away at the problem. And anyway, I, it's hard to discuss the national issues we have, you know, we have really serious...
I can barely wrap my brain around the School Funding Reform Act, so...
It's terrible, you know?
I just had to get on my soapbox about that issue, because that was such a huge amount of money.
It is a massive amount of money.
It's an absolute sin that the teachers...
And if someone else can figure that out, I will thank them.
Absolutely.
Profusely, but it is so far above my pay grade.
One out of every $6 in our school budget goes for medical insurance for our, for our employees. It's just extraordinarily, it's, oh, and, and coverage on average in the state of private employers, which I was, is $12,000 a year, average. That's one-third the amount we're paying. They're not, the coverages aren't as good, I mean, clearly, but it's still, it's the pool of people may be better.
Right, and employees are paying, are paying a higher amount.
High amounts here. So it's not so simple, but still, something has to break, something has to give, and I mean, that's the point of Darcy's great presentation, is that we are in such trouble, they are not helping us, and, and the medical is just one of, if any one of these things were made good, we would not have all of the problems we're having.
Well, that's why I raised, I raised that issue of advocacy, advocating on the national level, because I feel like this is absolutely heading towards a disastrous situation. And we're talking about, you know, what's the solution, kicking retirees off of healthcare? Like, that's not a solution.
Excuse me.
No, I mean, so don't get sick, you know, like, just don't age, don't get sick.
I think they're pretty healthy guys, Mark.
I mean, it's, it's an absolute sin.
Well, and unfortunately, the, the net result for our budget next year, bring it back to where we are, is, yeah, it's going to be even harder next year.
It's going to be worse.
So it's, it's a year-by-year struggle, and we're barely eking our way out of this one, and Scott still has to figure out where to find six figures by Monday. I don't envy him that task, and I don't envy us on Thursday to figure out where that's going to be, but it's, so, you know, there you go. And on that cheery note, does anybody have anything for old business they would like to bring up, new, or new business?
So just one thing, I just got an email that there's an HP March Against Anti-Semitism tomorrow at 6 o'clock.
Oh, where is this?
Beginning at the Doughboy statue, and marching down the Raridan Avenue, over the bridge into New Brunswick to the Chabad house at Rutgers to join the 7:00 PM solidarity rally with the Pa'ue Jewish community in San Diego.
Excellent.
Oh, that's great.
And then wasn't, there was something that Councilman Fine messaged you about, was that something...
Yeah, it's a service on behalf of his congregation that he'd like to hold on the lawn of the high school. So he's going to fill out facility request forms. It's open to the public. It's, uh, sorry, Ruth, you might be able to clarify, it's referred to as a, is it a Kabbalot Shabbat service?
Oh, that's a Friday night service.
Yeah, it's a regular Shabbat service, so I, he'd like to hold it on the lawn of the high school as a way to show strength and project an air of confidence, you know, but, out of the park.
In conflict, I'm sorry, with what Ruth just said, apparently there's a college fair for high school students at the same time tomorrow. It's at the high school cafeteria, there's a panel discussion from 6:30 to 7:15 about the college admission process.
Nice.
And it goes till 8:30. So more information is available from the Guidance Department, you can get them at extension 3006.
This is apparently the first time in many years we've done this, and I looked at the list of colleges, many local colleges are attending, and it's wonderful, it's really wonderful they're doing this.
Yeah, it's great. It's necessary, because I know that, as the mother of a senior, there's a lot to know.
Are you referring to Keisha Golden Cooper's fair?
That's what it is.
Yes, I believe it is.
Yeah, okay, good. It's coming up in about a week.
April 30th, isn't it? April 30th?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
No, I don't think it's so soon.
So maybe it's a different college fair?
Uh, I'll be there. I didn't realize it was coming up so fast on us.
I'll fail in Scott's calendar, how's that possible?
So, yeah, April 30th, tomorrow, 6:30 to 8:30, high school cafeteria.
And it's so important for somebody who's... Like, I've spoken with a, a young woman recently who graduated from New Brunswick, and she was saying that it was at that fair that one of her teachers was like, well, who'd you go talk to?
Oh.
And she was like, nobody, like, what do you, like, and it was like a teacher, like,